Okay, so the first thing is to approve the agenda. Has everyone read the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda, Chairman.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. We have the minutes from May 26th. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from May 26th?
Chairman, before I make the motion to approve, I, there's a correction that needs to be changed in the on, should I just tell you what it is?
Yes, go ahead.
On page three of the May 26th minutes, on that large, the top of the page, under, "Do not permit residential land use in a resource conservation zone." About midway, third sentence, it says, "And natural beaches within adjoining bayfront bark." And I believe that's supposed to be park.
Okay, so it's a spelling correction.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's a grammatical correction, yes.
Okay. Let's get a motion to approve them and then we'll make the amendment to change to correct the language and approve the minutes. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, and we have the one change. Sharon Humm, did you get that change?
I did, thank you.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to approve the minutes as amended with that one correction. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Okay, the minutes are approved unanimous. Minutes from June 15th, Planning and Zoning Work Session. Do we have a motion to approve the June 15th?
I'll make a motion to approve and also there's a correction needed on those minutes as well.
Okay, you want to tell us what you found?
Yes, on page one, under approved of the agenda, Commissioner Broughton, name is spelled wrong. I know, how can we live? And under the bayfront site visit, under Roman numeral three, I'd like to make a recommendation, it says Commissioner Broughton encouraged the town council also take a site visit, and I'd like to change that to make a site visit.
Okay.
Then on page three, under page 70, where it says, "The current code requires," it's about the third footnote, it says, "The current code requires both passive and active open space as a condition of approval for an RPC." I think the acronym should be identified, I believe it's Residential Plan Community, but I think it should be identified in the minutes.
Okay.
And I have no other additions or changes.
Chris, what does that acronym stand for?
Catherine, could you restate that? I stepped away to pick up some documents and I just got back at the tail end of the conversation.
No worries, I believe it's Residential Plan Community. I believe it's Residential Plan Community.
RPC. RPC is, that's correct Sharon.
Yeah. Yeah, and I just think we should spell out the acronym because it's the first time it's used and that's on page three, under the second page 70 paragraph, the footnote.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes with those changes. Do we have a second?
Second.
And are there any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the minutes for the June 15th work session?
Aye.
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 Okay. The motion passes, the minutes are approved. Do we have any public on the line that would like to comment? Hearing none? We'll move on then to item number six. According to the Chesapeake Beach Town Code, the chairman has, of the commission, has a term of one year. Last June, I was elected chairman of the commission. The ordinance says the term of the chairman shall be one year with eligibility for reelection. So I would agree to continue if somebody wants to nominate me or if someone else wants to nominate. The floor is open for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, this is Cindy, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Okay, Commissioner Green Gold?
Out of efficiency and quickness, I'd like to please move to reelect Larry Brown as chairperson and Lori Blackwelder as vice chair.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
All right, so unanimous. Okay, thank you. I don't know if I should thank you or not, but
Yeah, you shouldn't thank, don't thank me Larry. That's a thankless job.
Well, thank you.
Okay, now, we we received a number of things today on the comprehensive plan, a revised chapter five and a revised municipal growth section, chapter three. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to study those. I know that Lori and Cindy and
Kathleen.
Yeah, Catherine have comments that they'd like to make. I'd suggest we, that I just pass it over to you and you can go down and comment. But before we do that, Chris had made a presentation to the town council work session earlier this month on chapter five, and I thought it's an overview. It would be good to see what he presented to the town council. And then I would like to turn it over to the vice chairman and she can go through the items on, that she'd like to address on chapter five. So Chris, if you want to take the microphone.
Hey, thank you, and congratulations. I'm going to find okay, can someone enable me to share the screen? Sharon or Holly?
You should be able to share.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. So this is a brief, very brief overview that I gave at the council's meeting on June 7th. And I'll just go through the same slides. Well, first, the update, I was updating them on where things stood. I was pressing upon them that this hadn't been approved yet and that perhaps we'd have a public hearing in September. And at the time, we were working towards our June 15th work session. So first, I began with the discussion of the maritime district. I described the, which is outlined here, this is essentially the maritime zoning district, as best as I could translate it from the zoning map. The, I described that the mixed-use zone allows residential and building heights up to 70 feet. And then I said that the proposal is more of a commercial maritime zone with no residential uses. I described that the building height would be reduced from 70 feet to 35 feet, as you know. And I kept a caveat in there, plus five feet for floodplain elevation as needed. That's a rather specific standard, but you know, we can return to that. But basically, there's flexibility to deal with sea floodplain issues. And lastly, we would remove the bonus density overlay district, which as you know, allows substantially more density and building height. Next, I described the commercial gateway zone. Next, I described residential, I'm sorry, I'm back to the residential slide. And I described the various changes that were contemplated. And of course, this happened before our June 15th meeting, but it didn't change. First, I mentioned the, up to the right, you see my cursor, the red box there, that's air, those houses are zoned commercial. And I advised the commission that, or the council, that the zoning would be changed, at least the land use designation is changed to residential, single-family. And then lower, just north of Veterans Park, where my cursor is now, Veterans Park up to 28th Street, that area is currently zoned high-density residential. It's the only place in town that is zoned high-density residential that is not already developed as a high-density residential project. And you might, maybe not, there was a project a number of years ago called Sunrise on the Bay that came from this particular neighborhood. It was going to be like a 50-foot tall building with 10 or 12 units in it. In any case, the proposal would be to reduce the, or change the zoning to single-family residential, essentially making it part of the residential village zone, like everything else around it. And the height again would be reduced from 50 feet, which is allowed there now, to 35 feet. Then I talked about more of the global issues and how we address the residential village. Firstly, the dark yellow line outlining the middle subdivision now in town, that would remain as is, it's a residential village zoning district. It allows some diversity of housing types. And the area on Cox Road, from Cox Road to Maryland 260, which is own residential village, would remain so. And there'd be no changes to those particular parts of the residential village zone. But on the other parts, the north of town, from First Street, south to the marsh, and then between 261 and the bay, and then south of 260 to Calibas Field and over to the town hall, those areas would be treated differently. The change would limit the allowable residential uses to single-family. And so that other uses such as multifamily duplexes would not be permitted. And then I turned our attention to commercial. And I show what the existing commercial land is at the gateway to town. That is between E and F streets roughly, here's F Street and E Street. The dark red is existing, the beige color is proposed, and there's a planned increase of one and a half acres of commercial zoning. This would allow residential apartments above commercial. It would eliminate the possibility of townhouses or multifamily housing, which is, as you know, is allowed now in the commercial zones. And it would improve pedestrian safety and the streetscape, it's part of our streetscape plan. And the intent is to create a unified character for this entry point, this kind of gateway into town. Okay, and then I got into the discussion of sea level rise. And the last part of the land use chapter deals with the question of sea level rise and how to make sense of all the information that's set forth in chapter four. And in that chapter, three layers of recommendations are laid out, it's kind of a conceptual approach. First layer is lands that lie adjacent to naturalized areas, wetlands and water. These are the areas projected to be underwater in the next 30 years or with a 1 in 10 annual chance of flooding. So there's two elements to that. First, they're set, they're removed, they're far removed from the urban parts of town. And they, in other words, they don't have municipal services and, or public streets access. And they are really close to it, sort of surrounded by, up adjacent to the natural resources. And I highlighted in this green pattern where those areas are. So that the policy recommendation would be that these areas that qualify would be treated as resource conservation. And if you go to our land use plan map, you'll see that the recommended land use is resource conservation for all this, everything that's green. So the recommendation would be that the town council would be requested to amend the zoning ordinance and the map to allow only low-impact, water-dependent uses and no intensification of existing use. And third, the town would not extend water and sewer service into or to these areas. So that was the layer one, layer one in the central part of town. If we look at layer one in the northern part, there's only one big area that kind of qualifies. Even though there are a lot of impacts, there's only one area that sort of qualifies, meaning that it's really, in this case, really underwater and it's so intertwined with the natural resource. It's, here's the sea gate and all this area floods. Today, believe it or not, this marsh is zoned residential village. If the plan is adopted as recommended, it would be zoned resource conservation. And again, the same policy responses would apply to the northern area as do in the southern area. So layer two, this comprises areas projected to have the 1 in 10 annual chance of flooding, and that is a high risk of flooding. We know that with FEMA floodplain, those areas have 1 in 100 chance of flooding. And they are required to meet all kinds of very stringent design and building requirements. So we're talking about 10 times the risk. Policy response would be to ensure that there's considerable care taken in the use and development of these parcels. And as a condition of development approval, developers would participate in building to town-approved specifications with approved defenses, you know, defenses against flooding, where required to secure the safety and sustainability over the long term. And by the way, if you read the current draft of the land use section, I basically said something to the effect that I think it will become as customary to build resiliency for sea level rise as it is to build streets and drainage and stormwater management now. In other words, developers are going to have to do more than simply lay out streets and design for stormwater management. They're going to have to build the infrastructure that supports the communities that they're building and the residences around them. And then lastly, land development in these areas would be guided by a flood resiliency master plan. And those areas include the ones that I show here on red. So it wraps around the east side and north side of Fishing Creek Marina and the end of Harbor Road encompassing the Abner's Restaurant and gaming facility. So those areas, they're not being rezoned, but they're going to be the focus of more intensive plan review and related requirements. What they are, we don't know right now. We don't, we can't have the capacity within the context of this plan to figure that out. But now we know, we have marching orders to figure that out. And I think a lot of that will flow from the resiliency master plan. Then layer two in the northern part of the area, same thing. However, with respect to layer two, it's a little, there's really not much in a way of layer two here. Because most of this area is developed already and they really then are treated like layer three. Existing developed lands, existing that are at high risk. So existing houses and neighborhoods that are projected to be at 1 in 10 chance of annual flooding. So if you turn to that northern part, this image here, we see a sea gate. You see that, those streets are 1 in 10 chance of flooding. That means that the standing water we see there now is going to be consistent, chronic, continual nuisance. And all up C Street actually, at least halfway up C Street and on, I think 30th Street here, perhaps it's 31st Street. And then all along the edge of the marsh in, which overlaps with these houses, these are existing houses. And they are at risk moving forward for not only being inundated, but dealing with severe flooding. So these, obviously would be a priority as part of the flood management plan. Our response here from a policy standpoint is to address them in coordination with property owners, to work with property owners as part of the master plan to figure out how we proceed with these types of things. And when I say master plan, what I mean is an ongoing planning process. Of course, there's a discrete plan that will be produced. And it's funded actually already by the state and federal government. But that plan is going to have to be refined and detailed and massaged over time continually to make it useful as a guide. And lastly, if any redevelopment is proposed, for instance, if this townhouse community is proposed redevelopment or the residences along this area propose to redevelop their houses, then we're going to treat them like they're in layer two. In other words, they're going to have to build the defenses, they're going to have to come up out of the floodplain. They're going to have to make sure they don't impact the neighbors or the public streets. And the town's going to have to decide whether it's in its interest to extend the water and sewer or to elevate the drainage necessary, drainage pipes, so that we have positive flow. So you know, all those questions come into play with redevelopment. So that's a summary, I mean, a really quick summary of the kind of the big picture recommendations in the plan. And of course, I haven't talked about anything with respect to growth and housing and environmental protection really, but those are the big issues. And Larry, how'd I do?
Yeah, that's very helpful. I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
The charts or data, what's the source of that?
What charts?
The last charts on the layers that shows the potential flooding. What, if one wanted to go and look that up, where would one go?
So are you referring to the illustrations, the maps themselves?
Well, the data, well, the maps themselves are the data supporting those maps.
Okay, yeah. But these data are described in the chapter four and the references are listed there to the Maryland Climate Change Commission's report of 2018. And the mapping that we use to, the mapping data that we use to project these were drawn from that data, so that the sea level rise projected by the state's commission is the basis for these various shaded colors.
Okay.
And we have that document, it's actually been on the on the Dropbox. And it's a foundational document for all this surprise planning.
All right, I think, I want to make sure that's referenced in our plan, so people have a source to go back to. And I'm having a little trouble understanding the difference between layer two and layer three, since if you want to do anything other than the status quo in layer three, you refer back to layer two. So having difficulty seeing the difference. And in layer three, are, is it just talking about property that has been developed? Because there are several lots throughout that area that have not been developed. Does that make them a layer two? Or how does that work?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, I think that makes them a, well, let's see here. Yeah, to the extent that they are, so if we look at this particular map that I have up, these properties have public streets that are clearly in a at-risk situation. The properties themselves are elevated out of the the danger zone or high-risk zone and are shown to be in the 100-year floodplain by 2050. So these are, these would be basically layer three, would just be kind of a judgment call actually about how we would treat that. And I think the master plan would kind of work through those issues. But the difference between layer two and layer three is that layer three signals that this is a serious concern to take up with property owners. And should they, as part of the planning process, we will come up with broad recommendations to address these issues. However, in the meantime, if if redevelopment is proposed before we get the plan finished, then they basically get treated like number two. And then they fall into this area of intensive concern where we're really going to be focusing on whether the site is elevated or the drainage is properly designed and all the infrastructure is satisfied. So it's almost like layer two is you go it alone under the town's review authority. And layer three is you're participating in the town's planning process and becoming part of the overall plan.
So if somebody in layer three wanted to add a sunroom on the back of their house, an existing house, that would require all the procedures of layer two? Or how would that work?
No.
A sunroom that requires a foundation and, you know, 200 extra square feet or something onto the existing house?
Yeah. So yeah, in that situation, if it came to me as a zoning administrator, I'd use any authority that I had to make sure that that structure was elevated in the same way as if it were built in the current floodplain, even if it weren't in the floodplain. And as an example of that, we recently approved two houses that are really close to, that they're sort of, they are level two, I mean, and we required that they be built on pilings. Because in the, during the life, the economic life of these houses, they're likely to be impacted by flooding and water. And the engineer designed the houses so that water would pass under them. So in the same way, I would, I would work to make those additions safe. in light of the, these projected sea level rise maps.
Okay, does anybody else have questions they'd like to ask about the presentation?
Yeah, Chris, when you were talking about layer two, central parts of the town, you just kind of addressed it, and you talked about what developers might have to do in the future to address, you know, sea level stuff, the way that they have to address, you know, putting in streets and stuff like that. Do you have an example of what that might be?
Sure. So let's just look at a development scenario concerning land along the water's edge. Current, under current regulations, a developer would install your typical stormwater management facility that would capture the water running off of the parking lot and probably plant that facility with native vegetation to take up the nitrate, nitrogen phosphorus. Then it would release it slowly into the, to the, to the water. But we know if sea level rise is, is happening, and it is, that stormwater management facility that's allowed now under regulations is not appropriate, it's, it's not suitable to the long-term future. So we would require a different approach to manage sea level. We would, or stormwater management. We would ask that it be designed for the future that we expect, not for the current regulations which are quickly being outmoded. So that's how it would work, that's one example. Other examples might be that the, the, the land must be, could be raised up out of the flood zone along with the street so that you can easily drive from the street into the development site. So, you know, so none of those requirements would be allowed, would be required now, and few developers would take the initiative to do it now, but under this plan, that's, that's the focus.
It would force them into thinking along those lines, anyway.
Clearly, yes, right.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Chairman. Chris, in the, in the layer three, you give the ratio of a one in 10 chance of the flooding. Do the other, do layers one and two have a ratio as well, or is it just the high risk of layer three?
Well, the, everything shown on these maps in this middle shade of blue, not the very dark and not the bright, or almost gray, but in this blue is at a one in 10 chance of annual flooding. So in this particular site is, is the North Beach Volunteer Fire Company. And you can see its parking lot is likely to be flooded frequently in the decades ahead. The one in 10 chance applies across the board in each of these layers. And, and I'm not trying to make a distinction between them. If we go to layer one, the, what distinguishes layer one and layer two is that these are properties that not only have a one in 10 chance of flooding, but they're so close to and made part of the natural resource area that they're undergoing changes now. And they're, they're not suitable for development, and the town is, you know, would not extend municipal services to development. For instance, the plan says if you were to build a hotel on this parcel where I'm under the green shade here, the town would not support that. In fact, the, the policy response to these situations is to rezone the property to resource conservation. But if you look a little closer, this area where these boats are right now, on the ground, they're not in the water. These boats are, or this property is at a one in 10 chance of flooding. The, this part of the property is going to be inundated. So the policy response is that the entire parcel would be rezoned to resource conservation. So I guess in answer to the question, the one in 10 chances, high risk, and each of these layers has a high risk of flooding. It just so happens, layer one covers properties that are already developed, and people are living there now. That's layer three. Layer one, those properties are at high risk too, but they're far removed from anything, and they could, the policy response is to protect them and prevent them from, from developing, prevent them from being an issue and a problem later on. And the layer two is, is those areas that are high risk, but they're so close to existing infrastructure that, that the policy response is, okay, if you want to develop, we'll work with you. But you have to build the capacity of, of your neighborhood to accommodate this. You have to build towards our effort to make the town safe, starting with your own project.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is there are these layers in, in the anticipation and safeguarding from the sea level rise. Is there any type of laery or prevention plan in regards to the, to the slope along, along the bayfront? I know that we had talked about that you, that a builder would have to have their, their site plan approved before that they could build, and that it was, they would have to have certain geological studies. But is there any other further precautions or requirements necessary as, as is, as compared to the sea level and the water rise?
Well, again, these layers deal with sea level rise. But the, the plan as it's drafted now does recommend that zoning changes be made in the residential medium-density district, especially focused on B Street and the cliffs. And frankly, what those recommendations would be are things that I've brought up on occasions over the previous years with previous planning commissions. And they are that the allowable building envelope has to be smaller on these lots. And it has to be more difficult to grant variances on these lots so that more of these lots remain open space rather than covered with buildings. And that a greater separation happen between the, the slope and the streets, B Street. So, you know, those are the types of standards that probably ought to be in the zoning ordinance. And the recommendation now in the land use plan will allow us to, to turn our attention to that.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Sure. But in the meantime, Kathleen, the town did adopt the, that slope requirement, and has done a lot of studies, geotechnical studies. So, you know, we've done what we could in terms of adopting the regulations, we just haven't done zoning changes yet.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no more questions, did everybody, did anybody not receive Lori Blackwelder's email earlier this afternoon? Hello, Jan, welcome. I can see you, but my video camera isn't working, so you can't see me. So did anyone not receive Lori's chairman's email?
Chairman Brown, I received it, but I haven't had time to go through the chapter five entirely, since I just got up late last night. I was wondering if we could go through some of the other things that we had on our agenda or on the lists. I mean, you're talking about, are you talking about chapter five? Or are you talking about the rest of, the rest of the list that we had? What, what are you referring to exactly?
Well, I was referring to vice chairman's email, which is about chapter five, or her comments on chapter five. Honestly, I haven't had time to study the revisions to chapter five or the municipal growth section, so I'm, I will probably have more questions after this meeting. But I know some people have, have gone through it, and they've got thoughts they wanted to express, so I thought we'd try and resolve those while we can.
For some reason, I thought we were going to go through municipal growth first. But I think if Lori wants to go through her list on five, we can start with that and come back to municipal growth then. I don't know where we want to start here. Okay.
I was going to ask, you had had a comment about the introduction to municipal growth, and we'd go to that after the vice chairman's.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so Commissioner Blackwelder, you want to take the mic?
Sure, thank you, Chairman Brown, everybody. I did have some questions that I had laid out in my email about that flood zone that we just went over. And so should I go over those now, or just go straight down my list?
I would suggest going down the list, but I don't know how other people have it, but I have your list on my screen next to, next to it, so I can follow along. Can, can anybody else follow along? Have you printed it, or, or do you have it available to see it?
I do.
You would not have available. It sounds like everyone has it available. Commissioner Blackwelder.
Okay, thank you. And would anybody like me to share my screen since I made it today and have it up?
I, I've got, I've got it on my screen, so you don't need to share it for me.
Okay. Um. Okay, well, I'll start going down it, it's, it's available if somebody wants to let me share my screen. So the first item on my list is on page eight of our chapter five land use plan. And the suggestion was to separate the two thoughts and first objective, to make them two objectives. And it's an edit of a total of maybe six words. And I divided the thoughts to say, the first one was a whole thought. And I think this whole objective was submitted by Cindy. Develop land use decisions that are compatible with protecting and enhancing the quality of the Chesapeake Bay and its surrounding ecosystems while discouraging land development that promotes negative impacts. And then in that same objective, it kind of switched to a different subject. So what I wanted to do was divide that into objective number two. Separate out the thought, separate out the thought and make it read, highlight the bay and its tributaries as the focal point of the local and regional economy and as a major residential amenity that provides a higher quality of life for all. So it's basically just taking one objective and making it two objectives so that both objectives get the proper amount of focus. Any comments or objections to that?
I'm, I'm a little confused with the "and" as a major residential amenity. But I think what you're trying to say is it is a, not residential amenity, but it's a community amenity, isn't that what you're trying to say? Community.
Communities are great.
So if we could change residential to community, I would understand that a little better. Major community amenity that provides a higher quality of life for all.
Um, Lori, um, I, is there, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by, when you say highlight the bay, what do you mean? Are you mean protect the bay? Do you mean, I, 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 I'm not sure I understand what the, in, what highlight means in regards to the bay.
Um, I guess it means making sure that have access to the bay, that we have signage and trails that lead to areas around the bay, and that the bay is a, a focal point because it is our community amenity.
Would you rather say develop? Would you, whether you use the word develop, Kathleen, is that what you're thinking?
No, because develop implies that we might be building or something. I, maybe, you know, safeguard the bay. I, I see it where you say highlight the bay and its tributaries as the focal point, or make, make the bay and its tributaries the focal point.
How about consider the bay, how about consider the bay and its tributaries as the focal point of the local and regional economy? Considering the bay is the
Or recognize the bay.
Or recognize. So you want to reread that number two, Lori, as a change then, and make that up?
Okay, so, so with amendments, it reads, recognize the bay and its tributaries as the focal point of the local and regional economy and as a major community amenity that provides a higher quality of life for all.
Would you have to use amenities, because we're talking about more than one thing? We're talking about the tributaries as well, so it'd have to be community amenities?
As, okay, so cross out A and add
As major community amenities.
Okay.
Or, let me see, wait a minute, hold on, as a local focal point, a local and regional economy. Wait a minute, because folk, we're, we're referring to focal point, aren't we? We're referring to focal point, that's one. If you're referring to the bay and its tributaries, that's more, let's see, highlight, consider the bay and its
Yeah, right, it's a singular thing.
As a major. No, and as major community amenities. I would, I would think you would go and recognize the bay and its tributaries as the focal point of the local and regional economy and as major amenities, community amenities that provide, that provide a higher quality, a higher, that provide a higher quality of life for all? Is that what you're trying to say, a higher quality of life for all?
So in general, do we agree with that? And then Cindy can, can give it a, a final grammar check in the final version.
So what I, if you wanted to make that more specific about the economy, you would say recognize the bay and its tributaries as make, major focal points of the local and regional economy and as as, what, I don't know if you want to say major again, or, and as community amenities, significant community amenities that provide higher, higher quality of life for all, or something like that.
Why, why don't we just leave it as a, as a treasured community amenity, period? Why, why do we have to add about the quality? I mean, if it's a, if it's a treasured community amenity, I think it's implied that
Yeah, it's redundant.
I think it is redundant. I think you're right about that. I think we can leave it.
Wait, where does anybody's treasured community amenity?
So it would be recognize, recognize the bay and its tributaries as a focal point of the local and regional economy and as a major, a community, a major community treasured amenity, period.
As, instead of major, say treasured.
Or as a treasured community amenity.
Yeah, just, yeah, keep major out of there, just a treasured community amenity, there you go.
Okay, I like that. Does everybody like that?
Yeah. You have to say that provides a higher quality of life for all. Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll write it up, and I'll run it by everybody over email.
Yeah.
So I got all the Okay, so my second item on my list is to add an additional objective after number five and our objectives. The number five objective talks about securing the forest. And the number six that I suggest And the number six that I suggest talks about securing the heritage area south at Randall Cliff. And so the objective, they kind of, you know, follow each other because they're both natural areas. And the, the objective would read, at the earliest opportunity, secure through acquisition, the last remaining significant bayfront parcel in Chesapeake Beach known as Randall Cliff Heritage Area located in the southern panhandle of Chesapeake Beach. And so that's, we, we voted to recommend acquisition of this property and we're giving it weight by adding it to the land use section. Any objections?
I don't know if we need secure through acquisition. Obtain, because maybe we're not gonna, I mean, it sounds like we're gonna, well, okay, maybe that's all right. Maybe secure through acquisition. I don't just know if it's legal, if that's illegal.
I mean, that's the only way I know that we would get it. It would be an acquisition of some sort. The other option for us would be some kind of I mean, acquisition would mean it's ours. I want it to be ours.
Hey Lori, may I weigh in on this one? Yeah, thanks. So I think this is fantastic. I, but the way that I've structured the, the objectives, they're never stated as specific action items. And this is listed as an really clear action item. So I would suggest we move it into the the, on the, as a stated as a recommendation in the body of the, the chapter. And it is actually a recommendation that supports the other objectives too. So and I, and I think it might work just fine under the resource conservation subheading in that chapter where we actually talk about various ways of, of protecting forests and open spaces. So if you, if you're okay with that, I'd like to move in there because it's, it just doesn't follow the, the form of the draft. Otherwise, fantastic.
So I wouldn't prefer that it be in the land use section. But if you want to move it to recommendations, let me make sure that there is an objective that that would support it. Because you did say to secure the trees and secure the forest and that was an objective. So I'm not understanding why this wouldn't also be an objective.
Um, there. I would have to agree with Chris that it's more, that is a specific goal that you want to put under. It is an objective, but I think we don't really want to have more general objectives that, that kind of give them an overview of the whole land use chapter. This is a specific implementation of, of this chapter. I, I don't know, I look at it as too specific for one of the general objectives.
I, it as equal to the specificity of secure the forest.
Yeah, we do have that, that objective number five. That says, secure for all time, the conservation of the remaining stands of forests, blah, blah, blah. Where possible and practical, allow hiking trails, you know, basically make them usable for recreational benefits. So I, and that, that means it applies to all the property that we want to conserve and act and convert to recreation. Anyway, that's just my thinking. I, I just, a little stickler for that, but I'm, I'm not gonna say anything else about it. Wherever you, wherever the commission wants it, I'll type it in.
Okay, where does everybody want it? Do we want to highlight it and make sure it gets done or do we want it to get lost somewhere?
It won't get lost somewhere. It couldn't be a specific recommendation in the plan, Lori. I wouldn't suggest something to make it get lost. I mean, I want to make it get done. That's why I'm suggesting.
You're a devil child.
Where, where do you want to bury it, Chris?
Yeah, I put it in the appendix.
You know where I prefer, but I'm interested in where everybody else thinks.
Hey, I'll give you one more, one more Lori. How about we put it in the recommendations and then on the land use map, how about if we write over that big property that you're concerned about future acquisition for recreational purposes, right on that property? So it's right there on the land use map too.
I love that.
Yeah, is that
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Angst? Because it is a major deal, you know?
That makes me jump for joy. So if that's your recommendation, I'm I'm very happy with that.
Cindy, are you okay with that? Jim?
Absolutely.
Everybody.
You're my new best friend.
Okay.
Before we get off the objectives, well, Lori, I know you're on your list, but can we stick to the objectives now that we're on those, Chris? Would you mind if we went through the objectives again? Because there are two that are very similar. Um, and that would be number, do you want to, does everybody have the number five, uh, you, uh, number five up somewhere or? Hopefully you do.
I can put it on the screen if that helps.
Because if, because if you look at number two, the objective for number, I mean, I love all the objectives, don't get me wrong, but number two, is it really much different from number six? Or is there some way we can combine it, combine it? I hate to have so many objectives that we look like we're getting goofy on our, just, you know, too many ideas here. I want to make this complete, you know, kind of succinct.
Yeah, so I thought about that too. Cindy, and I went back and forth and ultimately just said, I think you were, I actually was thinking that you were conveying something else by suggesting number two. Basically saying, yeah, well, we're gonna be a small town. Let's act like it when we have approaches to development. Yours is about encourage, like having it a small town approach to development. And then number six is basically saying, protect that unique small town bayfront character. Well, there goes, setting up through regulations on new development, but I know, I was just thinking that, that you were talking about the, the approach that it's
But I think if we combined it, it'd be a little more impactful than having it.
I'm all for combining it.
Yeah, I, I think, would, would everybody agree that combining it makes it a little bit more effective than having it two different times? Or I don't know, what do you guys think about that?
Well, you want to say what it is that you're combining, so we know exactly.
So when I, so number two is retain a small town approach to development. Encourage zoning and density levels that do not overburden current town infrastructure such as streets and public facilities. And, but, but you see, number six to me is the same thing. I mean, number six, protect the town's unique small town bayfront character. Aren't we doing that in number two? Protect the unique small town bayfa, I mean, that's, as I'm looking at it again, it looks redundant. What do you think Lori?
You want to, and I'll move on. You can write it. We'll come back and read it for us.
Chris, are you able to put it up on the screen? The
I think it would help if you could. I don't know if you can, you?
Yes. Just a moment. There are six and here's two. Can you see them? I guess I should enlarge it a little bit.
Is that the original six, not Lori's new six, right?
That's the original six.
Right.
And the original two.
They looked, I mean, it's looked silly actually when I think about it.
Well, let's do it. How about if I just?
I, I like number six as, and in the front of it. If you can put number six up on top of it. Oh, uh, protect the town's unique small, I, I like number six.
Yeah, that looked good.
Oh shoot.
You can take out the retain a small town approach to development. You can just say encourage zoning and density levels. So in other words, keep everything and just take out retain a small town approach to development. And then just start with encourage zoning and density levels that do not overburden current town infrastructure. So that's, that would make it pretty much complete, in my opinion. What does everybody think on that one?
What about if we keep the, keep protect a unique encourage? Um, yeah, and just put I would just put an encourage zoning and density levels that do not overburden the town infrastructure, period.
Oh, yeah, you can take out such a street. Yeah, you can take out, thank you. Yeah, take out such as streets and public facilities. There you go. There you go. Protect the town's unique small.
That's nice. I like it.
All right.
Better, thank you.
And bury it somewhere, Chris.
Yeah, bury it in the back. Yeah, there you go.
I will. I'll take care of that.
Um, all right. Are we still, are we still on objectives Lori? Are you moving on past objectives? Because I have one more question about the objectives.
No, I don't need to move on until everybody's ready. Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, remember when we were talking before, Chris, about putting the issue of flooding up towards the top of the objectives? Remember how we saw, we thought that that would, should be like number two or three? Move it up? Remember that? We talked about?
I do remember that and I'm sorry, I, I
Oh, I mean, do you think we should do that? I, I'm thinking we really should make that more of a priority these days considering we're losing part of the town.
I, I, I happen to think it's one of the most important priorities. Certainly, it's the thing that's most new about this plan.
And I think it also is a reason why we are, at least in my mind, it's one of the reasons why I'm going to a lesser dense or a smaller footprint of, of structures, you might say. I want to reduce, you know, the impervious materials, et cetera. So I think, I think it matters to me, you know, individually that, that we include that as one of our major objectives in land use. So I don't know what everybody else thinks there.
I just moved it three. Just because we've worked on numbers one and two and
Yeah.
It seems like you really care about those being priorities. So I made, made it number three. And I, I guess the way I read these, I don't see them as one being more important than the other, but, but I, I get it. And it almost looks like six and seven belong together anyway. So, I mean, these new six and seven belong together. Six talks about forest and the recreational benefits and seven says, provide for increased public recreation to the bay and fishing creek water, front shorelines. So they seem to, they seem to be brothers.
I don't know if those two are brothers, but, um. I do agree. They're what?
They're from other mothers, you know? Brothers from other mothers, okay?
Right. Um. Yeah, that's, um, they can be brothers. I, you know me, I like the trails. I like them highlighted. Uh, does anybody else have any comments about objectives?
You mean? Six and seven, are you still talking about?
Yeah, are we gonna keep them separate or add them together? Okay, hearing nothing, I move to keep them separate. Any objections? Uh, all in favor?
Wait a minute, I'm so, I'm so reading. I'm a very slow, I'm very slow here.
You're really not that thick of a deal. Either way. Um.
My apologies. I didn't mean to suggest they ought to be merged. I, I just thought they, they look good together, but if, if I've thrown a wrench in the works, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It's just the one is already kind of long and the other one, I, I feel like we have a, um, you know, kind of a, a plan to to do the recreational access and that's a big project. So it would be helpful if it was separate.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay, let's move on.
All right. Okay, so that was my objective. Chris, my new best friend, so that he highlights the heritage bayfront area and now, oh gosh, now we're gonna need the map, Chris, because this is just, I don't want to go back and revisit votes. I just want to confirm what we voted, because there's a couple areas that I think that we might have voted differently and I just want to ask the question, is what we see is what we meant to do? Yes, that map. Thank you, Chris. Um, so there's about five of these questions and it's not, do we want to relitigate it? It's is what we see what we voted for and, I mean, I guess we can relitigate it, but we should probably do that as quickly as possible if we're gonna try to do it. So on my first one says, page 12 and 13, what areas did we identify as the gateway area? And then I posed the question, are we missing some properties along Maryland Route 261 that should have been designated as town commercial? Because we don't have a gateway area on this as a zone. And I think a lot of us for a long time thought that the gateway area went straight down 261, starting where you started the commercial area. And so I'm wondering if anybody else thought that that was the case. And I know I've gotten some comments from people that have viewed our meetings and prior planning, that they also thought that that was the case. So I'm just curious what everybody thought we did there.
And to be clear, you're talking about this stretch?
No, the, the gateway, oh, did I say 261? I'm sorry, Chris, 260, coming on 260.
This.
And towards Veterans Park on the south side alongside the road. I think that was historically, you know, in all other comp plans, the whole strip was considered, you know, kind of zoned for that commercial opportunity. Um, and so I think all of us were thinking of that, that that was the gateway area we were talking about when we said it could have residential use, commercial or commercial use or commercial over residential use. Um, and I think
You mean residential over commercial? You mean residential over commercial?
Definitely not the other. Um, that's, I'm not even gonna make that joke. That's not the kind of commercial that we want. Um, yes, and I think that even, I recall that conversation and, and Cindy had made the comment, yeah, she'd rather it be either the, the little cottage or the, the residential or the, the commercial with the residential on top or just a commercial as opposed to a row of townhouses. And so I think I think that we meant to make that whole thing according to like your zoning, that would probably be zone town straight down. That's what I thought we decided, but I was very confused when we went over the residential village, so I could be wrong. Um, does anybody want to comment on that?
I, I just want the clarification because a reference where the gateway is. I, I'm mistakenly under the impression that the gateway was actually where 261 and 260 intersected. And it was that, that immediate area, not, I, I don't know in my mind how, how much I thought. And it was that, that immediate area, not, I, I don't know in my mind how, how much I thought it extended past that intersection.
So you thought it was down there by Bayfront Park and that it didn't go all the way up?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess I thought it was 260 coming into the bay, in, into Chesapeake Beach, like maybe where the commercial area begins. And then down 260 from the commercial area, I guess for lack of a better word, where the, where the kettle corn is down there until it intersected with 261. That's what I thought as the gateway.
So the whole area there that is above the town center, you thought of that as the gateway area?
That's what I thought it was too.
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure, so this, this is why I'm bringing it up. Um, I guess at this point, since we all had a different conception of, but area we were actually voting on, did we just define the area?
Why don't we decide, why don't we declare what, what the commission wants? I'm not sure everybody's gonna agree exactly on the parameters, but, uh, uh, I guess my one comment on the map, there, there's maybe 10% of that map that, that people are really looking at. Uh, the rest of it doesn't, um, the, the map needs to be larger so people can, can, uh, uh, read it better. It's, it's very small.
You mean, are you referring to this map that's on the screen there?
No, I'm referring to the, uh, map we started with. There.
This.
That one, yeah.
So, so Chris, when you speak of the gateway, do you have a defined geographic area that you have historically identified as the gateway?
Uh, yes, and it's, it's right here on this map. It's everything within this heavy blue line. Get rid of that for a second.
Oh my goodness.
It's really.
It doesn't really. It isn't where the town intersects at all between 260 and 261.
No, it was, it'd just be a concentrated grouping of commercial businesses, not a strip all the way down to the road.
Got it.
Yeah, I was, I'm actually surprised to hear that there was confusion about this. I'm glad we brought this up. I, um, from the very beginning, uh, I've always referred to it or thought of it as just a sort of this ga- gateway that you pass through as you get to, you know, the center of town. It's really just the revitalization of those existing commercial buildings and some additional properties adjacent to it.
Yeah, well, I think the gateway to my mind is, uh, think, makes me think of intersection. But now it's really, it's not a gateway, well, I guess it could be a gateway, but it's really a pass through now that I see the blue area identified as the gateway. So absolutely, we, I think it's, uh, ironic that we all had a different picture of what the gateway was.
Right. So, so the question is, what do we want it to be? Because like I, I think it would be kind of cool if we allowed all three of those options in this whole section that led to the town center. Um, I didn't think we were talking about that then. I thought we were just talking about the strip, but, um, what do we want the gateway to be?
What do you suggest, Lori? Let's start there.
Oh. Well, I would suggest, um, this whole area. And of course it wouldn't develop once, but it, because it's residential or, uh, commercial. So you can take a house and make the whole house a commercial enterprise, uh, community friendly, of course. Or you could have residential over commercial, but it's not, you know, it's not a big multi, you know, high-rise type of thing. It's something that could develop over time and become more mixed use, more, you know, more commercial oriented. That's, that's how I envision that area.
So essentially what Chris has just highlighted there, all, all the way from the, the existing commercial area, slightly enlarged as he showed it originally, all the way down to 261.
That's what I thought we were talking about, yes. And I think that that would be a fine idea, um, if it did develop in that way. It didn't have, um,
Okay, does, does anyone object to that?
Well, I, it, it's, it, I think we talked about this a long time ago, Chris. I think even before most of these people were on the commission, the other people on the commission. But I think the thing that we were concerned about was, uh, traffic, uh, not enough parking for those lots. You would have to combine a whole, like three or four lots to try and get any parking in there. And you'd have a lot of egress problems onto 260, uh, onto that main thoroughfare there. So I think we were a little concerned about the negative impact of, of the, uh, the intensity of use. Uh, and that's why we originally kept it up in that one little area that's already somewhat, um, uh, you know, a larger space for, for handling commercial activity. Uh, but I do know that there is at least one developer down at the end who's wanting to combine some of those lots to make into a, uh, significant commercial venture. So I mean, if, if we were going to, you know, try and redevelop this whole area, uh, this is the time that we probably should look into thinking, you know, we could handle that intensity or not. But it's a small, narrow, two-lane road and I don't know if we can enlarge that or how you would, you know, allow for any parking or anything. Chris, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, thi- this is a perennial issue and, uh, this issue came up, I remember years ago, and there was strong opposition to the idea that, um, there could be, you know, commercial, um, buildings along this stretch. It was kind of, you know, focused on it only being where it existed, um, now. Uh, and you know, as you saw, the zoning map doesn't zone this stuff, uh, commercial. So I, I mean, I, to hear you talk about it, it raises some interesting ideas. I just have never contemplated it, thinking that it was an idea that had been tested and, and found to be, um, have some opposition to it. I mean, there are, there are some people along here who've come to the meetings when we used to have them at town hall and always tug me and say, please never let, you know, commercial development along this side and that is the north side of, of our, of our gateway. We like it now, the small cottages and we don't want commercial signage and parking lots and all that. Just keep it clustered. And, um, so that's why it is the way it is now. Um, however, I mean, to, to look at it on the other side, if the commission wanted to take a, a different path and, and suggest all this to be commercial, then the key would be to make sure that it was commercial in a way that really fit in. Because I don't think anyone would like the idea of an intense commercial project like A1 Antiques on this section, or really any building that's gonna bump up too high, um, in this area with commercial parking and all. I, I just always hear how nice it is to come in and see those little cottage houses and we always wanna keep them that way. Um, but if you, if we, so if you do decide to kind of make this a commercial drive all the way through, then I think it ought to come in with the caveat that, um, a, a plan ought to be established here about where access is and parking and signage and coordinated architecture and scale and massing of the building, so it doesn't change the character of this, this, this gateway. Um, which, you know, would basically apply here too, right? It's just that these areas are already kind of intensively developed.
Uh, Chairman Brown, may I comment, please?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner Ruddkey.
I have, I have always thought, and this is going back to Cindy's idea of, um, having adequate parking, access, ingress, egress, all the whole thing. Because in my mind, as a former Realtor, that whole area up there is prime for developers coming in, looking at it and saying, man, this could, you know, we could do something and have it really work and have it really. And I think that whole section in there, whatever it is that we do, it's like the first thing that people are gonna see coming into town. So it's gonna be a big, in my mind, it's gonna be a big deal. And we do have to make sure that if some developer comes in and puts a couple lots together, that, that it's gonna work for the town.
And we do have a number of property owners that own many adjoining lots that, uh, in this area here where I'm circling, that could come in with a project to develop. But it may not be the commercial that you wanna see, you know, but it could be commercial. Um, and remember, um, Larry and Cindy were there with the planning commission when, uh, I've forgotten his name, Luke Cucci. Uh, excuse me, I can't remember his last name, but, uh, he came in with a, a building of about, I think, 40 feet tall with two, I think, two layers of apartments above, uh, a cafe. And the, the planning commission was generally in favor of it, but a little skeptical and wanted to learn more about it. And we just happened to be going into the comprehensive plan back then, so there was no decision about that. The builder or the property owner has never come back to present a case to the planning commission to argue on behalf of this. Uh, so the project has sort of fallen by the wayside. Uh, and, and I do remember at times there seemed to be some opposition to the idea of that project, that it was just too intense, uh, for that particular zone.
Well, Chris.
Yeah.
Forty, forty, forty-foot tall building, you would obliterate part of the bay. You know, that gorgeous, you alright?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm, you know, something that tall to me is ridiculous in that spot personally. Because you want that unobstructed view of Veterans Park in the bay. That's my personal, it's, it, they're both such, it's such a striking scene.
But the, uh, the, we have the 35-foot height limit, which we have, uh, backed now. So that particular project would never, never fit.
So I guess the question is, do we want to allow the individual residences the opportunity to, uh, if, you know, if they have enough parking or if they can share, you know, if there's some kind of parking agreement, um, you know, a, a walkable town, people might park in the town center area and that kind of parking, um, some low-impact shop along that strip. Do we want to allow that potential? Or did we mean to? I mean, if we, if we did what we meant to do, we don't need to revisit it. It's just, I, I, I was confused and I, and I thought that other people were confused too.
One of the first times I could say I wasn't confused. I knew, I knew what it was and I liked it. I like it the way it is.
The way it is currently?
Yeah, yes, currently.
The way it's?
Where the blue line, the blue line that circles that section is what you're talking about, Joe?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Others?
I'd rather do, I'd rather do as well. I, I, I just, I, I'd like to do something really nice with what's outlined in blue. You know, and, and, uh, like the walkability committee when we, you know, recommended a bike lane, a walk space, a table space, you know, having the properties set back, but to do anything more with the cottages, I'm not sure that I'm in agreement with that. I like it the way it is.
Okay, Chris, right, um, while we're on the subject, what can the cottages do now, the way we have it zoned in our plan?
Way it's proposed in the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, single-family detached housing, um, on this side of 260, on the south side, only single-family detached. Uh, and on the north side, um, they could do, you know, if they can consolidate parcels together, they could do duplexes or even multifamily, which is the current situation that's allowed, it's allowed now under the current zoning. So this area stays the same. This area is, um, downzoned, I guess you could say.
Okay, is everybody happy?
So, so what is that zoned as? It's not zoned commercial. It's zoned low density, uh, high-density residential?
No, it's residential village.
Oh, I mean, on that side, what about the south side?
Residential village, both, on both sides.
Both of them are residential village. But residential, so but residential village means that you can have a, a small commercial endeavor in your, in your house, in your single-family house. You could. You can have a barber shop. You could have an ice cream store. You could do that.
Well, maybe not so much those types of uses, but you can have an, an architect's studio or a, um, real estate office. Uh, it's gotta be much more like a home occupation. Uh, and you gotta be there. You gotta be living in the building. You, you can't just convert it to a full commercial use. So.
Okay.
Yeah, this, it's, um, it's a kind of a halfway there type of approach.
Um, the, I mean, here, here's my concern. My concern is, yes, that is the cottage feel that you have when you come into town, but there, not all of, everybody's, uh, got a nice-looking cottage and there's, some of them are running down and I know some of them are rentals and they wanna, wanna do something else to them. Um, I, I'm, again, it is a very small area egress into the town. It's actually two towns, cause North Beach goes into, to, into that area as well as, uh, you know, all of Chesapeake Beach. So to intensify that area right there is of major concern. I don't know how we would put commercial in there without restricting the flow of traffic. And you know what, a Friday night on a normal, non-COVID day, and we're gonna get back to those non-COVID days pretty soon here. So I'm, I'm concerned about changing that right now. Um, so I would, I think, I think I'm, I'm reticent to make any changes on that at this point.
Okay, so as I hear, uh, Jeff, uh, likes, prefers to have the way it is with the, where it's encircled with a blue line. Uh, Commissioner Ruddkey, uh, feels the same way. Commissioner Greenwell feels the same way. So it, it sounds to me like, uh, we leave it as is.
That's what I hear too.
Okay, so let's, uh.
Agreed.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, um, the next question was, did we intend to rezone the strip along the west side of Maryland Route 261 at the northern end of town as residential only? Or should the structures along the road be labeled town commercial? Um, that is all the way on the north end. There's a little strip that's right across the street from Neptune. Uh, there's commercial in it now. Um, and, uh, 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 yeah. If that strip along the road, did we intend to include that in the area that we wanted to zone residential only? That was gonna get swallowed up by the flood or do we want, did we want to continue to allow those people to have their commercial option?
It's right here. I've highlighted and read, um, on this map. The area is currently zoned commercial.
Um, I had thought at one point, we talked about letting those houses have the either-or option, cause you had discussed at one point that because it's commercial, now the residential houses can't redevelop as residential and improve. And, and then I thought at one point, we said, well, why can't they do both? Um, and so that's another area where I got some questions about, uh, why did we zone that residential? And that was another area that we were very confused talking about, so that's why I brought it up. What did we decide?
My recollection is that we had decided to change that to all residential.
Boy, I remember it too.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I thought it was single family that we, we had decided on.
As did I.
All right, no change? Um, this is more of a concern. Um, same page, page twelve and thirteen. My question is, and I'm just going to highlight and highlight and highlight this because I'm worried about this getting lost.
No trust, no trust.
Well, it's, it's not even necessarily trust. It's just I, I have always worked a lot of admin and operation jobs and things get lost in the sauce. And very easy to lose things in the sauce. But what I don't want lost is the fact that areas are dedicated already um, in the RPCs for open space and forest conservation. So my question is, um, and Chris, you can set me at ease or take my suggestion and everybody can chime in however they want. Um, the question is, should all of the RPCs be labeled as suburban cluster and high density rather than keeping the designation residential plans community? Will this allow for more housing in these or nearby lots than was included in the RPC approval? How will the town identify which parcel areas have easements since the plaits have been redrawn? And what does this designation mean for the housing along Maryland two, Route two sixty-one across from Roland? And so I guess, I guess my thing is, is I would prefer to leave the residential planned communities zoned as residential planned communities so that there's no way to somehow lose uh, the idea that a lot of these pieces of land have easements and open space designations. I don't want to pay for them by accident. I don't want to rededicate them to housing by accident. And I just, I want, that, that's my concern. So, um, Chris, would it be hard?
Can you give an example of, of a specific example? Because the, you're using the term easements, which is, uh, I'm, I'm not sure it fits in this conversation.
Well, so in the last comprehensive plan, we have Richfield Station, we have Bayview Hills. Two examples, they are residential planned communities and they're platted as such and they're identified as such on our zoning map. And it's clear that those residential plant, planned communities are on parcels bigger than what's shown here as this cluster. Um, and in order to get approval for those residential planned communities, the developer had to adhere to forest conservation easements. And he had to plan within the community, open space, both passive and active open space. And that was all part of the residential planned communities and those areas should be dedicated. Now it's getting called a different thing. And I'm just afraid that that, the fact that a lot of these lands that are surrounding this, that are now being labeled resource conservation are really already dedicated. So if we say we do get the forest, I don't want to pay for lands that are already dedicated. Or I don't want to, you know, agree to a bunch of clusters of townhouses to get land dedicated, um, that was already dedicated anyways. So I, I would just, I don't want the easements and the open space uh, that was dedicated to get lost. And that's my concern. And, and so was everything.
There's, there's a lot to unpack there, Lori. This is, this is curveball. So let me start off by saying that the last comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty, two thousand nine, two thousand eight, didn't contain a land use plan like a comprehensive plan does. It contained a recommended zoning map. So I can see why you look at that zoning map in there and you think, well, you know, this doesn't match up with a zoning map, it's a different approach. The, it's intended to have, I mean, the, the proper approach is to have a land use plan map that recommends the preferred use of land and then follow it up with a zoning map where you can get much more detailed and refined and much more committed based on the consensus around, the politics around zoning decisions. So this land use map is a policy document. It's not the zoning map, it's completely different. So, but the beauty of this map, the way it's drawn, is that it differentiates all the land that's currently development, developed from the land that's currently set aside in open space. So it clearly conveys that it's the town's policy that there be no development in anything that's green in and around Richfield Station and Bayview Hills. And it says that, in fact, there is no development potential here. All that exists, exists. There are high density residential projects and the plan says, okay, we reflect that. They're going to be there and we're going to make it so that these will, at least for the next twenty years, they're going to be there as high density. Then everything else is going to be single family, just like it is now. And this suburban cluster, as we describe in the, the plan, is, is basically, it says it's a cluster of houses among the environmental resources, these corridors of green space. It's just that they were clustered in and among these sensitive areas. That's what it conveys. So all the discussion about in easements and, you know, getting what we paid for and all that, or being forced to do something, there's, there's nothing else. There, all the land is already set aside in open space or, or in easements. And I think the plan as it drafted now is basically saying, let's recommend that we go and do a deeper dive in the ownership patterns of these, to make these green areas, to make sure that they will always be protected by the right easements. And that's, that's a great thing, actually. I really love that, that's in the plan. But again, this is a cluster. Here's all the open space that was part and parcel of this project. So.
Okay, you have no concern that that could get lost? And you'll make sure that those easements don't get lost?
No, the easements run with the land, they're, it's a, and in most cases, it's, it's the town that's responsible for enforcing the easements under state law. So, and we do, sometimes people start taking trees down in their backyard and we have to say, sorry, that's protected by forest conservation easement in Richfield Station. Can't do that. Or here's what you have to do if you're going to do that. So, yeah, we deal with it all the time. It's a continual nuisance, frankly. But, which really raises questions about how these things are set up. And they're not set up in an ideal way, candidly, but they are what they are.
Well, I mean.
Drive it home one more time. Where can somebody reference that? All of the areas.
Where would you reference the, the?
The areas that have, that shouldn't be built. How does one know? Somebody chopped down a tree like a somewhere? Where do they look and say, oh, they weren't allowed to chop down that tree?
Yeah, so you go to the, um, the Maryland State Archives that records and manages all the plaits, all the subdivision plaits in Maryland. And you can search it and you'll pull up Richfield Station's plaits. And you'll see a line that differentiates private property from either HOA or some other ownership. And what's not private property housing is almost always protected as forest conservation. So you'll see notes on the platte that says forest conservation or the boundary encloses an easement protecting the forest against any development. There's, there's all kinds of ways of saying it.
So what, what happened on that big parcel that was redrawn outside of Richfield Station? Like, do you think that the protections on that are readily accessible? Like, if you, my, my concern is somebody can accidentally bring something to our board and say, I have this plot of land and I want to develop on it. And we say, oh, sure, well, you have to develop in clusters. Well, little did we know, that person really shouldn't be allowed to develop in clusters because they already dedicated that as part of their residential planned community. You see what I'm saying? Like, there's no, how can we make that easier as a town to make sure we don't double develop or double pay for buying something?
Yeah, so there, there's so many safeguards against that involving the, the credentials of the engineer that designs it, the title search that the surveyors do, uh, the, the work of the, the developer's attorney. There are so many steps. What in practice someone would have to do is say, I'd like to develop in this, this HOA open space.
But it's not. Space anymore.
What?
It's not, it's not platted as open space anymore. That's the whole problem. It's platted as a whole separate lot.
Can I offer something? You know, I, I understand Lori's point. Obviously, she, she's very interested in safeguarding these areas. And, and Chris, I understand your point in regards to it, it's written there, people can't do it. But I, I want to offer that, that, you know, I think there's this whole philosophy of people either are, don't take the time to do, to realize, for example, along B Street, it's a critical area. So we have a brand new house, four, four doors from my house, and they took, the landscaper was unfamiliar with this being a critical area and they cut down a hundred year old tree. Now, there are going to be sanctions for that and they have to, they're going to pay a fine. But it's either ask forgiveness instead of seek permission. And I think that's the reality of the situation, that people, you know, yeah. You don't want to make this the, you know, the concert, hence the comprehensive plan so, you know, labor intensive and so overburdened with requirements. But at the same time, people don't take the time. I mean, this is a landscape architect who was assigned to the, to the job and didn't do any of her homework and, and the trees down. And before anybody could even realize that it had been removed, it was gone. And so then they put a stop work order. But, you know, the, uh, the horse is already out of the barn. So I, I, I understand what Lori's point is about this. And I, I know we can do, make certain safeguards in the, in the, you know, plan. But I, I also think that, you know, there's the reality of, you know, people aren't always well intended and they have their own agendas.
Well, the, the thing to do is with this plan, actually, it shows everything that's green, that it's green now, regardless of the ownership, is, is limited by the resource conservation. So that parcel that you're referring to that may have been replatted or, you know, I don't know the history of it, it's still on this map somewhere in here as green. It is a resource conservation piece. Uh, and if it's part of Richfield Station, it's most likely protected by another type of agreement. It's called a FIDS agreement, Forest Interior Dwelling Bird Habitat, which was another layer of restriction that was placed on these forested areas as a condition for developing on these steep slopes and in this area. So I guess Lori, I want to assure you that as a, as a policy document, and that's what this is, everything that's not developed is shown as open space for the purposes of our plan. And we recommend, recognize that or recommend that all that open space be resource conservation. Let it be preserved. And at, at this stage of the game, I think that's the best we can do. When we get into the zoning issues and the research property and then we, now we have a policy basis for, for dealing with it. You know, this has given us the policy.
Confidence process to protect already protected easements. That's, that's really all the assurance that I was looking for, that there is a process in place. And you say there is, correct?
Yes, if you developed in, in area that was HOA open space or was somehow set aside as open space or somehow part of the original platte, you have to amend the original platte, which means you got to get everybody who's a party to that platte involved. So it would have to be a huge public hearing with every, from, everybody from Richfield Station participating before you, as planning commission, could ever decide to approve a platte amendment.
Right, so I wonder why GIS is showing it not as part of Richfield Station anymore? Maybe I just don't know how to read GIS, but I am worried about that piece of land. And, go ahead.
Okay. Well, can you, offline, can you tell me the, the property? Let's, just do the, maybe tomorrow. And I'll see if I can figure this one out.
I appreciate the assurance. That's all, that's, that's what I was looking for. Um, my gosh, can you turn on my light? Okay, page twelve and thirteen again. The areas designated as town commercial are redevelopment areas. Will this designation prevent the new buyers from retaining a single family home residential use after sale?
Uh, no, and, and I added some kind of language that basically said, housing would continue to be allowed in the commercial areas as single family. You know, you could continue to have the house, you could even build a single family house in the commercial area, which is a difference from what things are now. Uh, you can't build a single family or use property for single family in a commercial area unless you're grandfather, you know?
Okay, so that's all the town commercial areas. And is that for redevelopment? Like, can, can Roland's build a single family house? Because.
Yeah, yeah, conceivably, I mean, Roland's could take down that bank building and put a house there if it met various requirements.
Right, so maybe we need some language that says like existing. Because we wouldn't want the bank to become a house, I wouldn't think, right?
No, we wouldn't, but.
I'm, I'm not, I'm, the only reason I'm being so nitpicky, Chris, is because people do stuff that is weird and sometimes, I mean, you can't stop them if it says that you allow it. So that's, I, I, I think the easy solution to this is to also have a commercial. Um, and so any place that you only would want commercial, you wouldn't allow that residential option at all. And Roland's parking lot would be a good example of that. Or not Roland's parking lot, but that whole plaza. I, I don't think we want any extra houses there.
I thought, I thought we were, we had been talking about buildings with the commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor. So are we going to add altitude into our comprehensive plan? Above this altitude, you can have commercial but, or residential?
I guess the thing is, is we, we really didn't discuss places like Roland's Plaza and we really didn't see like what uh, town commercial was going to entail. You know, I, I don't know that on commercial properties in Roland's Plaza, we want to say, yeah, and plus you can add a bunch of residents because where will they fit? It's the same situation as across the street. They don't fit because of the road. And also don't fit because of the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I thought I had a chance to interject. Um, so this is what the plan actually says. Uh, new residential for town. New residential, for town residential, for the town residential use.
Yeah.
New residential uses would be allowed only as residences above street-level commercial. Existing residential uses could remain. So I said you could actually build a house.
Okay, so I guess my, my, my concern for, you know, certain areas like the Roland's Plaza is that that definition right there allows somebody to take that plaza and add apartments on top of Roland's and Subway and McDonald's and, and so I don't think it works for that area. That we maybe just need commercial, a, a commercial zone that's only commercial for that area in particular.
So not mixed-use?
Yeah.
Non-mixed-use. And the other question is, do you have to have more parking when you're going to have residential on top of the commercial? That's another consideration. If you had a two-bedroom, you'd be able to have a car per bedroom, or how does that work? I don't know how, how you would address extra parking needs. We've already got a problem with parking in that area. But the sin, so the tanning place could become an apartment, that's for sure. You know, that place above the bank, they're tanning, it's where I get my tan. Just kidding.
Okay, so the way that we fix this is to say that the only part of the town commercial designation where you can have a residence above commercial is in the gateway, as we defined it, that small pod along 260.
Again, do you need more parking then? That, that's another issue.
Of course you do. And, and if someone were coming in for development, they would provide a parking plan that met the residential and the commercial, without a doubt.
Yeah.
It's, it would, it's required under town zoning laws, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think it would be easiest just to make two zones, but, you know, one that has, that's just called commercial and allows whatever commercial you're saying. And, you know, the town commercial on the areas that we did want to allow that, that apartment up top.
I'd say we've already differentiated commercial into three land-use categories. Let's just keep it this way it is now, just so it's, the plan is understandable. And, and we'll just keep this, you know, we'll add that, that caveat statement. As a matter of policy, residential above commercial will only be allowed in the gateway.
Okay.
I mean
That works.
Right, yeah. It, so that means it wouldn't be allowed up on 260, just south of Neptune's, in that stretch.
Right.
Okay, but the existing houses there could remain, obviously.
Yeah. And yeah, my big concern was the Roland's area, and then that parcel you're recommending across the street. But if it says only the gateway area, then I think you have it covered.
Okay, good, I'll, I'll make that change.
Chris, you, you, you mentioned the area south of Neptune's. That's residential area. We, we changed that, right?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Larry, I'm, I'm getting mixed up, tripped up. Yes, we changed
I'm mixed up too.
Residential village.
I'm mixed up too.
Who's up first? Oh, no, not that one.
So, I'm going to take my example from Larry and say that it's 8:55, and I know a lot of you guys haven't read this chapter. And do we want to stop midway through this so that everybody can add their questions about the land use chapter? Or do we want to continue on this list? It's one, two, three, four, five, six bullets long, and then a discussion about the layers. Or maybe I'll just get through the bullets, and we'll have the discussion about the, the, the layers next time.
Can I ask, what is our schedule on when we have to have this all completed by a drop-dead date, Chris? When is this? I'm kind of lost on that.
Well, if we had a, a public hearing September 15th, which seems like a good time to have a public hearing, our work would have to be done by July 15th.
So we only have one more meeting?
Right.
Theoretically. And we still have we better push forward, we better keep going, we better work till midnight. We're in the midnight oil.
Okay. Um, so we have parcels that are labeled resource conservation due to the I think you answered this, so if you can quickly just affirm, what is our liability? Will we have to buy those parcels that we're labeling resource conservation, but that currently have development proposals on them?
I don't know that there are any resource cons, oh, oh. Not necessarily, no, I don't think so. Someone could make that claim. But zoning ordinances change when good comprehensive plans are adopted after a good, you know, public hearing. And if there's a legitimate principled reason for making a change, fine. The key is that the new zone, in this case, the resource conservation zone, needs to allow a property owner to make some use of the property. If the new zone is so restrictive as to prevent any use, then it could constitute a taking under the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. So I think the answer is, depends on what the zoning ordinance ultimately allows in the resource conservation district. And right now, we're not writing a zoning ordinance.
So I, I guess my question is, would it just be more prudent to zone those areas for what we would want to be allowed on them? Or what we would, you know, what would be tolerable for us to allow, rather than have to pay for them?
Right now, the, the plan is that certain areas are designated resource conservation because they provide some type of environmental benefit or the development of them would be at high risk to the future occupants. So why would you, are you, I thought the commission was satisfied that the resource conservation was appropriately drawn on the town's map. And if so
So I, I don't
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I don't have a problem with them being resource conservation, but I don't want us to have to pay for five parcels of land. Like, I, I feel like that there is probably some low-impact use that we could allow, and if allowing a low-impact use would prevent us from buying a bunch of parcels, I would prefer to do that, because I think we have a lot of things that people would rather spend their money on. And if those developers can build on their property in such a way that allows for them to properly address the flood zone, I would prefer that they be allowed to do that than buying the property.
Well, can you suggest what these low-impact uses would be? Because we can refer to funding over to the commission's budget committee.
We can do what?
We don't have a budget committee. This is not, the budget, the finances of the town isn't our business.
No, the finances of the town, well, they kind of are, because we're taxpayers, but you know, by us labeling it resource conservation, now we're, you know, making them buy something when maybe we don't have to. In my opinion, some, two of the plots in the town center side, trying to recall the map, but anyways, I think some of those parcels could handle a, a low-impact building with some storm management and some site elevation. And if they can do that, I think that we should allow it, so we don't have to buy them.
Okay, well, what, what we need then is a motion on your part of what you would propose to change it to, or so we can move on.
I would propose to change the parcels on the town center side and the marina area that are currently zoned resource conservation as very low-impact commercial.
Can you explain again where you're talking about?
Yeah, I need to see it on a map, I think, please.
I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm
It's not that one, Chris, it's the one with the resource conservation areas.
Well, this shows resource, this is the, this is the map.
One with the green, light-green flats?
That's this one.
This is the, this is the only one that matters, at the end of the day.
Okay, you're right, right, right. Okay, so the, I guess the main one is the one after the courtyard properties in the marina zone.
It's right here.
With the court, that is a concern.
Well, that was, that was highlighted in the presentation I gave to the council, so let's, I can pull that image up. This is the parcel. So that's, that's the parcel right there. Oops, highlight it with a different color. So you're right now, the, the plan calls for resource conservation for obvious reasons. This, most of it's wetland, and because it, this part of it is expected to be underwater in the decades ahead, and this part would be subject to severe flooding at a 1 to 10 probability each year. And you would like to remove that from resource conservation?
Yes, and label it, like, neighborhood commercial.
I, I think we're, we're revisiting issues that we've hashed out extensively. I think, I think what we need to do, if we're going to revisit things, is we need a motion to, for what the suggestion is, and if we get a second, then we'll discuss it. If we don't have a second, we can move on to the next issue, because we'll spend a lot of time replanning the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to replan, I was just trying to ask what our liability was. And I guess the answer ended up being, maybe, we might have to buy that, if we label it resource conservation. Right, Chris?
Well, we had this discussion at the last meeting, and, and remember, we said, what's important is what is allowed under resource conservation? And we said, is, there's a whole lot of things that would be allowed under resource conservation for water-based properties, marina activities, so they can continue to do what they're doing now, and it would be perfectly fine. There's no taking, you know? All the other ones we talked about.
Okay, that's perfect. That's, that's all I wanted, Chris, that's, I, you're, I forgot that we talked about the vote. Yeah, as long as there's no taking, I'm great. And I, and I'm sorry to, to take up time revisiting something that I didn't remember. That was my question. I will skip the one on page 18, that's, it's a newly suggested, well, it's a newly suggested parcel that we're talking about being commercial, and it looks like Chris has it zoned as town commercial. So that's commercial with residential over top, is that what that is?
You, you have to help me, what, what, what location are we referring to?
Yeah, I don't see it on 18.
It's by the Howland Building. And it looks like that's what it is, town commercial.
Oh, 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 okay, yeah, so oops, sorry. Everybody, it's this parcel right here. And there's a paragraph in the, the draft that discusses it. Currently, it's a residential parcel. This is the Howland Building, Captain's Quarters, commercial, where the library is today. Where my cursor is. And this is Roland's Shopping Center. And this is a, a property that's currently zoned residential. And this proposal would allow commercial prop, a commercial use of this property if and when it obtained the right of access to Maryland 261. Because it would not be a feasible commercial parcel if, if customers had to travel through a residential street to get to it. And because of the grade, you can't just access Captain's Quarters. There's this, you, you can't put a road between the two of them. So it would need access to the Maryland 261. And the reason it's shown this way is that it's a reflective recommendation to allow more commercial space within the town's boundaries that is currently not developed. It would be really the only non-developed commercial parcel in the town.
So this is in front of the library or behind the library?
It's on the south side of the library. So this, this is the road, this is Harbor Road, where my cursor's
It's a, it's a house with a screened-in porch on it right now. You've got a house with a screened-in porch there. A big yard. You see the backyard as you go up this street, you go up 261.
Okay.
Let me just
It's got that screened-in porch.
Screened-in porch, beach community.
See, what, the only thing that I don't like about it, Chris, is just slowing down traffic on 261 as you're going south, because they're coming right out onto 261 as you just cross the light. And that's the one thing I am concerned about, is just the egress, the ingress, you know, people slow down, you're going to slow for traffic back into that intersection. You see how it's right there, and you, if you, if you're coming in and out, you're going to slow back up traffic that's just crossed over that intersection. Yeah, so it's right next to, it's right next to the library's entrance.
Here.
Yeah, it's right in there. Yep.
Would they, so there, there's no way to bring that into the other property?
No, there's too much of a height difference.
No, I mean, through here, you could.
You could, I guess you'd have to
Not to hear, Jan, the, the question is, you wouldn't be able to back here. That's where, there's a large retaining wall back here. But it gets much more short as you approach the road, so this could actually easily be an access into this.
And then would the neighbors really want to have a commercial endeavor inside that neighborhood? You know, you're, you're kind of bringing commercial into that neighborhood, and I'm not sure that's appropriate, myself. I wouldn't want it.
Well, um, I, I understand that, sure. But you're not going to bring commercial in the neighborhood if you have access. And again, thinking long-term about the, um, the, um, we're trying to allow for more commercial space to, to develop, to serve.
But that means you'd have to bring trucks and everything. You'd have to bring trucks in there just for deliveries, because you wouldn't want to bring them through. So you're bringing, so again, you've got another driveway that's bringing trucks in there for deliveries. You're bringing, you know, more noise into that little community right there. Um, I, I just, I don't know if it's worth one commercial endeavor to wreck a whole neighborhood. And possibly if it's, if it's food, you might have rats and things that are coming to that area. I, I just don't think it's the right thing to do for that neighborhood.
My question was just what would be allowed there? Um.
Well, I know you, it looks like you already made it pink, so I guess it's already commercial. I don't know.
Nick, but commercial might be more. I was just wondering if there was just, I don't know.
I thought we had said no to that while back, but it looks like we didn't say no. Did we not say, we, we added that into the commercial zone? Okay, I didn't think we did. All right.
We did. We have talked about it, but I never recall hearing, um, commission say.
I don't remember any, but I don't remember discussing this and, and for final completion on that one particular lot, just because again, it interrupts that whole flow of that neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, I mean, with the right screening, I wouldn't mind it being commercial. It's just, I'm, I'm reluctant to want to plot it now because we don't, we don't have any, like, code for it. Right now, it's, I don't, I don't know.
I would move that we take that out of the commercial and make that residential again. That's what I would, I would move that we, we, I would make a motion that we remove that lot from the commercial zone and we, we zone that residential.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, I would only like to add that if we start taking one house at a time out of little developments and turning them commercial, then we really break up our little, you know, our, our whole object, the objectives that we have is keep the small-town feel. And every time you start adding little commercial ventures, you're taking a little bit of that small-town feel away and adding it more, more, uh, you know, commercial and, uh, more traffic, more intense. And you're disturbing the neighborhood, that little neighborhood in there.
Okay, anyone else?
I need to hear the, I'm sorry. Can I hear the proposal again, please?
Oh, my motion would be to remove that little, that one lot that's in pink right there. I don't know the address, Chris, but that one lot, remove that from the commercial zone, uh, the town commercial zone and make, put it back into residential. It was originally residential. Put it back into residential.
Okay, that makes sense.
Anyone else? Comments?
I'll, I'll support Cindy's motion. I'm not against this in theory, but I, without knowing, having a good plan of what we think would go there, um, I'm happy to keep it in residential. So I, I, I would, I'd go yes on that, just because I don't know what we're thinking about allowing.
Okay, Commissioner Brought or Commissioner Larson, any comment?
I like the idea that it would stay residential. I, I don't think it, it, I agree. I mean, accessing it and then having that, any type of commercial endeavor in that location up on, on, off the roadway, I think is, would just be chaotic.
Commissioner Larson, any thoughts?
Let's make it unanimous.
My, yeah, okay, the, uh, just so you might know my thoughts, redeveloping what is the library and those, uh, buildings there will probably require demolishing it and starting over again. And having a little bit more property might make that a more attractive, uh, commercial investment. So anyway, uh, same, uh, all in favor of changing it to residential?
Aye.
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 Okay, the ayes have it, five to zero.
Um, Chris.
Yes?
I want to. Go ahead caller. What's that?
Go ahead caller.
Caller, caller, yes. Um, I wonder if you could make a floating zone for opportunities such as this that would allow the opportunity to be reviewed and considered and brought in only if the plan was something that was good.
Wow.
Uh, can you define this?
And good.
The situation, the situation where you're taking a property and it's near other commercial property, and maybe you want to give that area, and there's an opportunity that maybe you didn't foresee, um, that would, uh, allow that property to help other properties and existing commercial use. Um, just an, an opportunity for that to be seen. Um, but not necessarily to say, yeah, we're going to zone this commercial. And now all of a sudden, guess what? Lucky you, you have every commercial use that's already in the commercial zone. Like, you see what I'm saying, Chris? Like, if it's a float, like a floating redevelopment opportunity zone.
So, Chris, if I, if I can jump in for a second. When the, the, first, the zoning would have to be changed. We, I mean, we aren't changing zoning. We're making a recommendation to the town council. And they, if the town council sees an opportunity, uh, to change the zoning for a, a particularly attractive project, the town council can do that. I would ask, how did Mama Lucia's get a new, uh, restaurant in an area that was zoned residential when the zoning said it couldn't be there?
Well, in that case, it was a, a non-conforming use. So it was entitled to the continuation of that restaurant. Uh, it was called, it's been another, a, a number of iterations of that restaurant.
The bar.
Yeah.
You mean the bar that was there?
Captain's or something. Yeah, so it, it had the right to continue the use as long as it hadn't been expired or closed down for a year. And it kept its use active. So it retained its right to use it as a, a restaurant. So it's a non-conforming use.
I guess my point is, if the town council, uh, just because the comprehensive plan says X, Y, or Z, the town council ha, will adapt to the circumstances as they develop. So if we had a hurricane that wiped out all of those low-level areas, including the town hall, uh, the town council wouldn't have to wait for a new comprehensive plan to redevelop areas. They would change the zoning or make the, uh, necessary accommodations to rebuild the town. So I, I, I think we're putting too much into this, what we allow and what we don't.
Okay, so, um, that about sums it up. Uh, I think, Chris, do you have any further comments on that situation?
Yeah, flo, floating zones are a thing. And, uh, when we write a zoning ordinance, we could, um, create a zoning, such a zoning district. They float over a property and only settle down on the property when the town council allows it. But it's a, you know, it's a more detailed provision that could be drafted into a zoning ordinance.
So they could just set.
Go ahead.
Could it set, oh, like, all commercial properties so that it kind of was kind of hanging out there available?
Um, well, yeah, if there was something, if there was some type of public objective that was, you sought to achieve by the floating zone that couldn't have been achieved by the standard commercial zone.
Right. Okay, um, I really was just questioning what we were going to allow there. So it looks like nothing.
Oh, on this property, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
A house.
Right, a house. Um.
Lori, may I go back to one of the things in your, your list that you didn't mention? Um, and that's, uh, this year, page 12 and 13, "Should the vacant lots across from the fire department be labeled RV1 or RV2?" Question from Wes Donovan, "Will townhouses be allowed on these properties?"
Oh, yeah.
So that's a, a pretty important question. The, the, what I've assumed in drafting this was that in the RV1, townhouses would not be allowed. Because I thought that's what you were, you were, you, the planning commission were deciding. That, yes, single-family would be allowed, but not townhouses.
And that question is, I don't know what we decided. Um, so that's, that's why it's there.
Right, so yeah, I'll just tell you what I thought, but, but yeah, but I'm glad that you raised it because this is meaningful to me, because it make, I'm like counting the number of housing units that could be built. And, uh, the proposal for that site is, I think, 12 townhouses. If it were built under the RV1 suggestions, there'd probably be four or five single-family houses that could be built. So.
And I have preference. So.
Everybody know the property we're talking about?
Show us the map again. Show us the map, Chris.
I need pictures.
Here we go. We're zooming in.
All right. Manchester Peak Beach.
That's the view that Jeff Bezos is going to have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So this is across from the firehouse, right?
This piece and this piece. Well, the firehouse is here.
Oh, okay, so it's up from the firehouse?
Yeah, this is a rise. Yeah, it's, it's here.
Isn't this the blank, that what used to be Stenit? Doesn't Stenit own this property?
The Donovans do.
The Donovans do.
Own this property, but it used to be the restaurant, right?
Yes.
And it's a flood zone.
There used to be a restaurant, uh, south of 31st Street. North of 31st Street were four or five houses, as I recall.
Did they get washed away? Is that why they're not there?
Stenit's, uh, had three feet of water in it.
Yeah.
It had just been remodeled and they decided not to, uh, restore the houses. Uh, uh, were all owned by the Donovans and, uh, were bulldozed in preparation for a, uh, 18, uh, I guess 36-unit condominium that they planned 18 units on either side of, uh, 31st Street.
Yeah, they were gonna, Marx, they were, uh, Marx was gonna build them.
Yeah, and the economics just didn't support it. So they, uh, they set that project aside for the time being. And now, as I understand it, that's been, uh, they're, they're thinking more about townhouses there.
Yeah, I, I know I ate at that restaurant, probably when we moved here. And, uh, and then after that, it, it, uh, started flooding more and more. Went the way of Buckmasters.
Well, they've, they've significantly raised the property, uh, there. They raised the road. Used to be a heavy rain and you'd have water up to the door of Stenit's. But, uh, I think now, uh, it's, it's raised significantly, three or four feet. And, and, uh, if your camera could move to the left a little bit, there's a pump house that, uh, the Donovans allowed to be put there. And frankly, we don't see any flooding ever, uh, on C Street anymore.
So he had asked that question at our meetings, and, um, that's, that's why I'm raising it here. Uh, like I said, I have no preference. Um, I think lots of different things would work on these properties. I just don't remember what we decided, and he had asked for clarification. So, um, what, what was the answer?
Well, if you're considering deciding now, I think if, while looking at the surrounding land uses and looking at question of whether, uh, townhouses are compatible with this location, obviously, the prop, property is surrounded by, um, uh, on this side, the buildings won't, won't be as tall as the structures behind it. Um, and I think a total of 12 townhouses were contemplated. I may be wrong about them. I, uh, but.
I think it was 11, Chris.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, the alternative is to develop it, it's single-family lots. Just reduce the number that could be built in the zoning district. But be, but you, but also, you'd have to be generally consistent, I think, uh, in the RV1. Would townhouses be allowed here, but not in other places in the RV1?
I, I don't, I don't have an argument either way.
I mean, my concern, my, my concern, Chris, that is, we've determined that that's a flood zone. Haven't we deter, look at the marsh right next to it. Haven't we determined that that's going to flood considerably in the next 10 years?
Well, it, it, it wouldn't be developed unless the developer were, were, was able to persuade the planning commission that the project's designed in such a way that it won't and that the, the streets and the access points and the drainage and all those things that we talk about in Level 2 or Layer 2 are addressed. Um, and that would apply no matter what uses happens there. And on this particular property, the, the land was elevated. The sidewalk along here was elevated, and even the road was elevated somewhat to bring it out. And that's in part why, um, well, the land itself is why, the, I mean, I don't know if the road was elevated, but drainage improvements were installed to help solve.
The road, the road was elevated.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I, I wasn't around then, but yeah. And, uh, so the land is certainly higher than the road, because, you know, one of these mapping exercises we go through, you always see that this area is high and dry. It's just the, the public streets are, uh, set a bit lower. I'm not overly concerned candidly about sea level rise impacting this particular project in the timeframes we're looking at. Um, yes, Base I Road is an issue, but it's an issue for everybody. And these two projects are not going to make Base I Road any different. It just doesn't follow logically that it would, so.
That was my assessment of that area as well.
It's a shame that that can't be parkland. It's a shame. We need parks in that area as well.
It still could be.
I mean, I like resource conservation myself, but.
You know, it's.
Right now, Cindy, it's not resource conservation.
No, I know, but I, I, I like it less intense use, because I think if you put heavy buildings on that property, you're going to have water displacement. And I think, you know, Larry may see flooding more down the road because of water displacement at that point. May not have it now, but there's more buildings, he might. I'm just saying, the more intense building, the worse it's gonna be.
What tier is that in?
Well, I was, uh, suggesting that it's la, Layer Two. Um, that's kind of, if the proposal was suggested there, that's how it would be treated. You'd have to make sure the project met, uh, any concerns we'd have about sea level rise and flooding. It, they'd have to demonstrate that the infrastructure was there to keep the future occupants and the property safe and dry, and make sure it was sustainable.
And then there's no additional town obligation in Layer Two, is that right? That's a developer obligation?
Um, yeah, there's no, there's no town obligation right now to raise the road to make that property more developable, for instance. It's, it's more like, we would say, you have to raise the road to improve the grade, to, to keep it, keep water from entering the property.
Okay, um, does anybody, it, right now, it's in single-family home use. Would anybody make, like to make a motion to change that?
No, I don't, I don't think it should be any more intense than, than single-family home use, that's my feeling. I think that's more than we should have in that, that area.
I love the idea of making it a park.
Yeah, it shouldn't be park, it should be park area, that's what it should be.
I mean, that would be perfect.
And maybe that's some areas that we could ask the town to look about, uh, look at acquiring, I don't know.
And.
I think. I don't think.
Park or in the community facilities is that when properties come available.
Say it again, Chris.
I was just saying that, there's a state. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, I closed out of that, uh, because it's interfering with the connection, um, main, managing all that data. So, um, the current community facilities chapter, uh, says something to the effect that, uh, the town council should, um, acquire land that may, may come available for future parks. Uh, it doesn't specifically say that this property is the target of a future acquisition. It doesn't recommend that a park be there per se, it's just a broad statement about the, for parks, and recognizing that the town would likely have to buy land for parks.
Okay, so we need a, there. It's not a park. And right now, it's single-family home use. Uh, Jim, did you have a comment? I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, I was, uh, I hate to say this, but, uh, we've been talking long enough about those two parcels. I was trying to remember what your concerns were about them. I'm, I, it's true, I'm sorry, because we've digressed.
Uh, just because I wrote it doesn't mean I have a concern or a problem, what that was brought up, because same public meeting, we asked to clarify, and it was a very confusing conversation, the, the public was confused about our conversation, and so it was in my comments as something that we would want to clarify. I'm happy with it in single-family home use.
Okay, I get you. Yep.
I'm fine, by the way, what did we say? Um, and then there's no motion, as I can hear it, for, uh, a change from what is currently uh, plotted as single-family home use. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Not me. I think that's all marshland myself, I don't wanna put any more intense use in a marshy area. I, I know they can put pylons, but that's just me.
Okay, so that's no change. Um, Chairman Brown, do you, uh, agree that that is no change right now?
Uh, there was no motion to change it, so, uh, it is as, as it is. Um, I believe that finishes your list that you wanted to get through, is that right, Lori?
Um, it's a great stopping point, yes.
Okay, and, uh, Commissioner Greengold, you wanted to talk about, uh, the municipal.
Oh, I, I just, yeah, uh, if you wanna go switch over to the municipal growth chapter, um, I know we're switching over here to another chapter, but um, I just, um, was thinking that I wanna, I don't feel like the chapter is as positive as I think it should be, and I think it has to start out with a positive, um, introduction. And so, um, if you don't mind, Chris, um, and I just thought that if we could take out the part that you have in yellow, or at least most of it, I guess, maybe leave some of it if you had to. But I just rewrote one, I don't know if you got my email, um.
I have it on the screen now, Cindy.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, I've got three computers going, so I, okay, so if you have all read that, do you wanna read it out loud? It says, "This plan the town, for the town of Chesapeake Beach includes a smart, limited approach to development. This approach is necessary to accomplish the goals overwhelmingly supported by town residents. The following objectives were considered in this plan. Protecting the environmentally sensitive waterways and forests around the Chesapeake Bay. Maintaining safe and walkable communities, retaining a small-town feel where neighbors feel connected to each other and their community, and improving infrastructure and town enhancements. Keeping growth at a pace that is respectful of these goals will enhance the quality of life for residents and encourage visitors that appreciate, uh, I should say, appreciate the level of development that complement these goals." So I would take out appreciated, appreciate the level of development that complement these goals. I felt that it was a little more, uh, giving the perspective that we need to have to go into is why we make, we wanna make the changes. Because then, Chris, uh, keeps on all the history, and it makes us look like we're kind of like ogres as to why we're changing it. So I wanted to put in the reasons why we're changing it.
Ogres.
I agree.
I mean, I mean, you know, some people might look at that, the developers, for example, go, why did they, you know, take, take the height limit down, you know, that kinda thing. So I wanted to.
Probably very, when he wrote it.
I'm sorry?
I said, Chris was probably very depressed when he wrote it. We're sorry, Chris.
I mean.
See, it is depressing, I think it says what it is, I think it's encouraging that you actually say, you, we're gonna be intentional about what we do, and we've decided that we're gonna grow in this level, we're consistent with our vision statement, I mean, I, no truer statement has been made, I think, well, I wrote this and thought, this prod, this plan is really hanging together very logically and sound, and I, anyway, that's just me. But I like this stuff too, and this hearkens back to the land use chapter and the other chapters.
Right, it kinda ties it all together, now, if you wanna keep yours in there and just add it to it, I'm fine with that.
No, I know, I, no pride of authorship here, it's gone if you want, want it to be gone.
Just, just on that one little, I, I noticed that you're just gonna make a change with, uh, that appreciate the level, uh, but where did I say? Oh, gosh, did I make a boo-boo somewhere? No, I think it's already changed, okay, that appreciate the level of development that complement these goals, no, it looks fine. No, I think it's all grammatically correct, so I think you're, if everybody agrees to it, I mean, I.
Okay, is there any, any objection to this? It's, uh, I think most of us, uh, find, find it, uh, helpful.
The only thing that I would, uh, wanna ask you all is if I was okay in saying overwhelmingly supported by town residents. I was using the last vote as a way to, and some of the surveys just to support what I'm saying there, so that's why I, I said that. But if you don't think that's true, then I could, you know, I'm okay with changing it as well, but.
Fine, I'm lost.
Okay, I, hearing no discussion, that's, uh, let's leave it that way. Okay, and, uh, we have a cat that's showing the commission. The, um, Kathleen, you had a couple things you wanted to raise, you sent an email.
Yes, mostly mine are, um, just grammatical, um, and I don't know if, Chris, you just want me to send them to you, or?
Yes, please do, that'd be good.
Yeah, can I, if, as you go through these, uh, sections, uh, that we got today, and, and the other, there's still another section or two we need to receive, as you find grammatical or editorial things, if you wanna just send them directly to Chris, and, and we can, uh, uh, save time during our next meeting on that.
Absolutely.
Yep, indeed.
Okay.
Um. Chairman Brown, should I, should we get through my last, uh, edits for the maritime commercial zone?
Oh, right.
Or, um, can we pick that back up last, next time? The other two items are a discussion about the tiered, which will take forever, or just, you know, it's more clarification. Um, but I do have an edit on the, the, a description in the maritime commercial zone. Can we go over that real quick?
Yeah, go over that.
Okay. Um, thank you for whoever's putting it up. Oh, that's, it's not up.
But no, thank you.
I'm doing it, I'm doing it. Give me a second.
On page nineteen, um, I have a highlighted edit, it's in your email, and the suggestion is, um, to add a sentence, and I'm gonna read the previous sentence, and then the sentence, uh, that precedes that, and there's another, um, another comment to add at the end. So it says, "As shown on map three, the maritime designation encompasses the part of town centered on the Fishing Creek Bit Bridge, including the existing boating and marina activities on Bayside Roads." That's what's in there currently. Um, so I wanted to add, "The goal for this area is to provide an active land use at grade level for all commercial construction, and to provide pedestrian access to all waterfronts in the area. Uh, accommodating and promoting," and this is all part of the next sentence, uh, that he already had in there, "the diversity of commercial uses and intensities that have long defined the town's historic waterfront over time." And so it's just adding in there that the goal, uh, of commercial development in that area is to provide an active use, an active land use at grade level, um, and then also to provide pedestrian access to all waterfronts in the area.
Question, does that mean grade level? Does that mean the original grade level, or does that mean the created grade level, or what grade level are you referring to?
Grade level, to me, means the level that you would walk on as a pedestrian.
And when you say pedestrian, do you mean public pedestrian, or does it matter? Do you mean anybody?
No, I want to, um, prevent making the waterfront private property areas, that the waterfront is accessed, has pedestrian access to it, I want to preserve the access, that's one of our, um, goals.
So you have to say public, you have to say public access.
Okay.
And you, and I would, sorry.
Go ahead.
I would say.
I like your.
Yeah, I say, provide public pedestrian access to all waterfronts in the area. Uh, and I would, I would say, um, I, again, really like the idea of original grade level, just because if somebody creates these big berms, um, then you raise all the level of the property, and the, the height limit, limit is no longer, um, you know, something that's being met. You're going, you're going much higher.
Sorry, Cindy, go down, who, who's scrolling? Am I scrolling?
I was scrolling, sorry, I'm there.
Who's scrolling? Oh, man.
Okay, yes, that's.
Keep your hands up or scroll.
So, Cindy, you wanna, you wanna change, um, pedestrian access to public pedestrian access to all waterfronts, and you wanna change?
And I, and I think it should be at original grade level.
Okay, I like that.
The developers will not, but that's another issue.
Well, I mean.
You'll have to get a variance, I guess.
To make the flood plan, I get stuck doing infrastructure here, and I don't think we should do it if there's not any public access to the waterfront, so. Um, and it's a, it's a good goal, and lots of communities have it, it's, it's, um, ideas to make the maritime district and the maritime and town center area an active, vibrant town center, it's a key tenacious use, and it's, uh, something that many, many people adopt. So, Cindy's in favor, anyone else?
Always in favor of all that, that's good.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
We've said it, we've said it before, but we need to say it again. Say it as make that happen again.
I particularly like preserving access to the bay, because we've given away everything else.
Yes, indeed, excellent.
Okay, so if we have a consent, is there any objection to that? Hearing, uh, is there a second part that you wanna talk about, Lori? Highlighted there.
Um, yes, please, thank you, Chairman. Um, and so it's just that second bullet, um, it's just a qualifier, because I think the maritime district, as is described here, it mentions having, uh, um, it mentions having varying densities and varying intensifications. So, um, I just wanna include that qualifier additionally, over-intensification of development in this area is a concern. An assessment of public infrastructure, traffic studies, noise or light pollution, and other relevant factors should be carefully evaluated when considering project approval in order to avoid adverse impacts to residents and nearby recreational or community, commercial opportunities.
Oh, you meant properties.
Er, yes, I did mean properties, thank you. So.
Any, any discussion? Chris, uh, what do you think?
Um, I think, uh, this statement is reflective of community concerns, uh, there is a sense that over-intensification, um, is detrimental, could, it could have adverse impacts, or may have had adverse impact, so I think it's a fair statement.
Okay, if there's, is there any, uh, objection?
Not here.
None here.
None.
Can we go to the top of that page, Lori, where you have promoting the diversity of commercial uses? Do we really want to use the word diversity of commercial? You mean maritime uses, or what do you mean there? What do you mean, what is, what are we talking there? I thought, in the maritime, it has to be maritime uses, right, or something related to maritime use? Isn't that how we have that?
Those aren't my words, only the highlighted, that's my, my words.
So we have to change Chris's word.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm saying, Chris, on top of that page that she has there, promoting the diversity of commercial uses?
What, what about it? That's good stuff.
Didn't we, isn't, aren't we talking about the maritime, um, maritime area, and don't we wanna relate it to the maritime, uh, commercial uses? I mean, do we wanna specify, because when you say diversity of commercial uses, you don't wanna put a car lot on there, I mean, you wanna put something that's related to maritime use, right?
Oh, I see what you mean, uh, so, I mean, the, you, the, the implication is that the zoning ordinance ultimately would be a little more restrictive in terms of what uses were allowed there, the, the maritime-like, water-dependent, water-related.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Right. We don't want to use car lot over there, that specialize in boats, if we can, well, maybe, I don't care, maybe they, if they're going to sell boats, maybe I don't care about that, I don't know.
So you're suggesting that Chris insert a qualifier, and he's doing it.
Yes, yes, Chris, that's, you see what I'm talking about, the diversity of maritime commercial uses, right? Is that the right terminology?
Or water-related?
Water-related, maritime.
And water-related commercial uses.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I think we need to specify that a little better.
There you go.
It's related, not real.
You see, this computer just doesn't work.
It's the computer, every time, I know.
Keyboard just doesn't, no matter how, like.
It's amazing how that keyboard doesn't work.
Yeah. Thank you, Kathleen, for, you know, helping me with this bad keyboard I have.
Yeah.
I'm working on getting a new one.
Yeah, maybe for Christmas, we'll get you a new keyboard.
Well, you know, the amount of times I've rewritten this chapter, you know, I have put it through its paces.
Well, I know you start, after a while, when you rewrite it, you, you look at things, and you're like, you just can't see them, it's just, you know.
Yeah.
A blur.
True.
Hey, if we, Chris, if you could, with the changes that have been made here, if you could send those out again, so we can not revisit them.
Yeah, right, right.
We have one more meeting.
Well, we'll be, we're going to finish when we finish, I'm not driven by a schedule. I want everybody's questions and comments to be heard and explored. So, let's see, I don't know if there's, there's anyone from the public that wanted to make a comment, but we have a public comment period here at the end of our session tonight. You'll have a two-minute limit on comments, but we'd certainly welcome any public comment that may be had. Is there anyone? Okay, we're hearing none. We'll continue, continue with this at our next hearing, which I don't have the date, but it's, I think, the fourth Wednesday of July is when it's scheduled. If you would, as you read through the materials that we have, if you'd send me your questions, I can put them on my list, which we can then methodically go through and try and move quickly through the, through your issues. Any final comments?
We have all the revised sections now, Chris, are we all up to date on the revised, revised, revisals?
We're getting close. I'm going to send out the revisions to the remaining chapters momentarily, I mean, within several days. So, that in combination with this discussion will effectively be the complete report. Of course, that involves the summary chapter, which is the implementation chapter too, so we're getting close.
So you'll be setting out chapter 10?
Yeah, I'm setting out chapter 10 now, in terms of organizing it and outlining it. I haven't started drafting it yet, but I want to get through the various changes before I forget them, before I write chapter 10, so.
Chairman?
Quickly following.
Yes, Commissioner?
Chairman Brown, I just want to comment, you know, thank you for sending out the document, the municipal plan, as well as the land use chapter, but like, today, my printer decided to go on vacation early, so I wasn't able to print that. So I went to the library, and in total, it was 47 pages, and 20 cents a page, it came to $9.40. And it isn't that I'm not willing to contribute to the community treasure chest, because I'm happy I did. Yeah, I just, in the future, if we could, when, either stop by, if the documents are at the town hall and pick them up, or, I know soon we'll be meeting back in person, but I, I just wanted to inquire about that.
I think we'll talk to Sharon, but I believe we can work that out. I know, I believe Fran currently goes into the office Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And if you saw, the town hall has the plan for opening Phase 1 and Phase 2, so we'll be putting COVID behind us soon. But in the future, either talk to Sharon or talk to me, and we'll, we'll work something out, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I still move.
I second.
All in favor? I.
I.
Thank you very much, good night.
Good night.